Call this meeting to order. This is a commissioner meeting of September 13th, 2023 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center at the Commissioner Room on One Spring Street in New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Number three is moment of silence and salute to the flag. I would like to take a moment of silence for our fallen from 9/11. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four is our public statement pursuant to Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Add a quick notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located on One Spring Street, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger. It is also posted on the bulletin board maintaining the Administrative Center for Public Announcements has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five is the approval of agenda. I get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, you have a second?
Second.
Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Number six is proclamations, certificates, presentations. There are none. Number seven is a public hearing. This is the final adoption of ordinance 23-08. At a regular meeting held on August 9th, 2023, we introduced the first reading. The following ordinance was advertised in the New Jersey Herald, issue of August 18th, 2023, together with a public notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. This is an ordinance amending the previously established regulations governing road openings and access permits issued by the Division of Engineering for work within the Sussex County rights of way and work impacting transportation, infrastructure owned or maintained by the county. And a motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, you have a second? Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Stain carries. Is there anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? All right, seeing none. I get a motion to the public hearing be closed.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Close. Stain carries. All right, now I need a motion that this ordinance be fully adopted.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Close. Stain carries. All right. This is a motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted and also post the same on a bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Have a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Commissioner Space. Commissioner Fantasia, seconds. Any discussion on this? All right, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Number eight is a public session from the floor. This is a public session for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Motion to open the floor to public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stain carries. The floor is open. Agenda topics only, please.
Okay. The resolutions at the end part of the agenda?
Yes. Yep, anything on that?
Okay. My name is Helen Hexton. I live in New Jersey. I wanted to ask about the Dennis Library. I'm wondering if you have made any decisions about it or if you're just going to be discussing it this evening? Like what progress has been made with regard to the symptoms of the gift of the Dennis Library? And the continued maintenance of it? And any renovations to it?
I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Hayden, only because he's a liaison to the library. He might have some answers for you, so I'll let him start if you will mind.
So we don't have anything as to where the grant is. As far as the acceptance right now, I don't think we're in a position to take the library. Only in that we have 64 buildings in our inventory and 63 need rooms. We have a deferred maintenance bill of 44 million, meaning if we were to do all the maintenance needed to every building in the county, we would have to spend 44 million. And now we're going to add more money. Prosecutor's office is going to need to be rehabbed because of a mold. And we're looking at seven to eight million there.
So, the first thing you said was about the grant money?
Don't know where that is. For the grant money, we would have to take the building. And right now, I don't think we're in a position to take it, knowing what we have as far as the information.
Okay, but we've had six years to get it.
Yeah, but it doesn't look like we're getting the federal grant. Doesn't look like it'll cover it.
It was a state grant.
State grant, rather, sorry. Yeah.
We're not going to get that? So we've lost $3 billion of grant money?
No, I think... May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, Commissioner, it's just like a chicken and egg thing. So, the... If we don't... The county doesn't take title to the building. There's no place to put the grant money. The county is still contemplating, as Commissioner Hayden said, whether or not it makes economic sense to take on another structure. The current county inventory is significant, and a lot of them have rehabilitation needs. There is concern that the amount of the grant wouldn't necessarily cover all of the things that would need to be done to bring the library up to a
Correct.
point where it could be occupied.
Then...
And if that's the case, then the county is faced with the next challenge of figuring out where it takes money from, from the existing inventory of buildings and repairs, in order to put money into the library, which kind of was how the commissioner got to his last point, which is we've got other... That county has other more pressing issues, like a mold problem in the prosecutor's office that has to be remediated. So they're trying to evaluate as best they can. I don't want to put words in the commissioner's mouth, but evaluate as best they can buildings and priorities and finances to make sure that they don't undertake something that they can't afford to do.
To take on another building right now would just tax our system. And then it would be a maintenance cost.
So I mean, but so what we're saying, though, is that this particular building is not as important as all the other buildings?
No, we have five other libraries. They need work as well. So where does it... Where do we draw the line? Prosecutor's office is a health and a safety hazard. I guess they're not important then. I mean, at some point, you have to make a hard decision. And a hard decision, it looks like it's going to have to be made. I can't look at the people that work at the prosecutor's office or any of the buildings that do have an issue like that and say, oh, I don't care if you get sick. We're going to go get a library. We already have five libraries. We could set up transit stops, make frequent pickups there and take them to the other ones.
What did your architect say?
We hadn't got anything back yet, had we?
No.
And I'm kind of waiting on that. And I'm afraid, because I'm in that industry, I'm afraid of what we'll get in that report. Thank you.
Wendy Whipple, Seven Goodell Road, Ganderwood, Georgia. Been coming here for several months regarding the Dennis Library issue. I appreciate the fact that you were transparent enough to put the Dennis Library in your closed session agenda, so we knew that you will be discussing that this evening. Has there been another issue that has sparked the public's attention or gone unnoticed in the last several months, other than this Dennis Library renovation? I've been coming here for several months now. I haven't seen anyone else coming in about an issue that they feel is as important as this. I know you've received many emails. I know you've received resolutions from town governments and recruiting Green Hampton and Newton, all in support of this project. Where the grant is? The grant is a state grant. And the grant money is still there. If... I realize the county has a lot of buildings to maintain, but the county's not in a position to take on or to receive grant money to help to repair or renovate those buildings like they are in the case of the Dennis Library. That I'm aware. I could be totally wrong. I mean, I can see that you're spending a lot of federal money to navigate all the different projects through the federal government, but here is a case where the county would have help in maintaining that building. Now, if you're making this decision without having the report of engineers or architects, that's disturbing to me. Because the last time I was here, that was the path that you were going. Have you not received anything from them? Because to make a decision of this magnitude and to take away, very possibly, library services for 25,000 people in this county, 27% of the people who visit libraries in this county are in communities served by the Dennis Library. That doesn't include the exempt township of Spartan. So the percentage would be even higher.
I think the one thing that Commissioner Hayden left out is we did go over the budget, what it was going to be. And it was upwards of 20 to 40% more than the $7 million allotted for that. So we're no longer...
What happened to both the alternate plans, Mr. Martin?
Basically, what I'm going to say to you is it's not going to be $7 million anymore. It will be upwards of 10 or 11. Now, we're on the hook for anything over $3.5 million. We are on the hook for that. And we can't afford that right now. We have other priorities when we finish. The Dennis Library will still be open, as long as the Library Foundation wants to be open. Nothing is going to get closed. That's not what we're proposing.
What makes you think the Newton Library Association is going to be around any longer?
Oh, I don't... I'm not making any assumptions.
That's probably something that the county should investigate, because that organization has given the building to the county because they
We don't own the building. They didn't give anything to us.
Okay. They offered... They offered it to you. And the previous pre-hold award commission board accepted it. I know that nothing's been done as far as the deed is concerned. I understand that. But the intent of that Library Association was to give the county the building. They didn't charge work because they're not in a position to continue to maintain that building.
And I made an analogy...
So what's going to happen?
And I made an analogy months ago, and I'll make it again. If somebody gave you a million-dollar house when your taxes are $100,000 a year, were you going to take that house? Would you take that house?
It would depend upon what it was I wanted to do with that space. If it was just a place to live.
You understand my analogy, right?
Oh, I certainly understand your analogy. But I hope you understand what I'm saying regarding the future of that building. There is nothing that says that building is going to be around two, three, four years out.
So...
Once that happens, then the county is in a position for how are they going to provide library services
One minute, ma'am.
to 27% of the people of this county. That money... That money is still there. It's disturbing to me that it doesn't look as if you've even looked at an alternative plan. Where's the alternative plan here? If we can't afford it, and also, just a reminder from your last budget hearing, this county has a $20 million fund surplus. To me, that would enable you to do something at Dennis Library and things for other buildings. I'm not naive. I know that you have other buildings to maintain. I get that. But what I'm trying to say is this is a golden opportunity to have something done with the help of the state of New Jersey.
So we don't know that we could get the grant. It is...
Now, grants already are, sir. I'm going to argue with you about that until the day is long. That grant has been given to us by the state librarian. I spoke with her on the telephone. That grant money is there waiting for us.
Per approval. We don't have the approval yet.
From the state of New Jersey, you most certainly do. That money is sitting there waiting. You can check with the county library director.
Then we still have to come up with a $7 million, ma'am.
Excuse me?
Then we still have to come up with a $7 million additional.
You said that we didn't have that money. We do.
Even if we got the money, we still have to come up with $7 million additional right now.
What about the modified?
There's no modified plan. They're just talking about a plan that's too expensive to deal with.
And I think when the commissioner is saying that about not having approval, that's what he's referring to. There's one... There's one plan. And that plan is the one that the budget estimate succeed $10 million, same as Commissioner Carney said. In the contract, the grant language says that any change required would require us to go back and have it reviewed. So I think what the commissioner is alluding to is that the $3 million comes with strings of tax. The plan that was submitted, which is old now, is what from... Did I interrupt you? Give me a sec. That's all right. No, it's just I... I'll forget where I'm going, and I don't want to do that to you. The... The plan that was submitted that resulted in the grant was for specific work. For argument's sake, 10 things. If they went back now and said that they want to do five things, they have to resubmit. It has to be reapproved by the Library Association.
Yeah, have you seen that form?
I've seen what?
The form.
I've seen all of it.
Yeah, it's not that form that's pending.
Understood. But that begets the question, which is what these guys are going through, is sort of evaluating the viability of that in conjunction with all the other responsibilities that the commissioners presently have with their building inventory. That's what I hear the commissioner is telling.
What about the other questions? Well, again, you can't be vocal, can you, as a client?
Understood. That's part, I think, the original plan that was submitted when the plan was sent down to the Library Association for the grant approval.
But we don't have any idea what an alternative plan might be. You're just saying at this point, we're not willing to go forward. Is that what you're saying? Or is that going to be discussed during closed session this evening?
I will tell you this, and we'll end it at this. We will be discussing it, yes, absolutely.
And you'll come back tonight with some kind of an answer or not?
Um... That I can't guarantee. I'm not sure. There's... There's... Hold on. There's a lot of things that we have to discuss. I just want to add one more thing, and I've said this before and I'll say it again. We're not the only county who has this problem. Inflation's all over the country. We know... As we all know. So we are not the only... We're going to end it at that because your time is up. You could come back again at the end and bring up some more stuff if you'd like. I just want to end it at that. Nothing's been decided. I can honestly tell you and look you in the eye, nothing has been 100% decided.
Yeah, the one spot where...
We have to weigh out our options and make our priorities.
Where I think you're making an assumption is no vote has been taken to do something or not do something beyond anything that's been done up to today. They are discussing it. I mean, you can get a sense of where I think some of the commissioners' heads are, but no decisions to be made.
And you're taking into account what's been discussed this evening? And the emails that you've received and all that, and the comments that you've got?
Yeah. Look, the one thing I've learned for a short time that I've worked for these folks here is their hearts are in the right place. You know, they're... You get a limited amount of resources. You can only tax residents so much. And, you know, they... Everybody kind of does the best they can with the handful of eggs they have in their basket. And the problem is there aren't enough eggs in the basket to make everybody happy all the time. And, you know, you try, but you can't. So, you know, it is... It's a debate that goes on all the time, as the commissioner said, in council chambers across the state. New Jersey is an expensive state to live in. It's an expensive state to do projects in. You know, they're doing the best that they can with the resources afforded them, without overly taxing other people. And you have to unfortunately prioritize sometimes. That's the debate that they're going through right now. And it's a good faith debate, honestly. And it's a healthy one that they need to have in order to kind of get a sense of how the county's operating. This one operates pretty darn good.
All right. Is there anyone else?
Can I just say one comment?
Go ahead.
We are also looking into like transportation options for those that maybe are handicap accessible and don't have vehicles. I do believe, which I'm going to look into further, that there is transportation right in that area that goes to the Franklin Library, near the Franklin Library, and the Sussex Wannage Library. So that's an option for the time being for those that don't have vehicles.
Heavycap accessible.
Yeah, right.
So the people from Newton that are handicapped can leave all the communities served by the Dennis Library, we get on the bus, and go to another library to receive services?
It's an option for now. Well, those are our libraries. You know, right now, the Dennis Library isn't, but it is something that, you know, we can look further into to... You know, there already is transportation to Sussex Wannage, which is handicap accessible.
Good?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Moving on. Is there anyone else from the public? Any comments on the topics? All right. Motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. Number nine is commissioner's comments. Let's start with Commissioner Hayden.
Okay. Lake must connect on regional planning board. We received a grant for $540,000 to get us a new harvester and backhoe, which was shortly needed. We've been keeping the harvester together. Basically, Earl Riley and his crew down there have been working very hard and diligently. And he even got us with the purchase of the new harvester, an upgrade from the steel deck to aluminum deck, increases the life. And the frame is being changed to stainless steel. So we're going to have that to keep the lake clean and the weeds harvested. That's about it right now.
Thank you much.
I'd like to give a shout out to Earl for all his hard work that he does. He takes it to heart. He's out there with a needle, needle gun, scale in the thing so he can read the old one and keep it going. I mean, they really... They take pride in what they do, so.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Space?
Division of Community and Youth Services, Office of Transit, Sussex County Transportation Annual Public Hearing will be holding its annual transportation public hearing virtually via Zoom with a call-in option at 12:00 PM on Thursday, September 21st, 2023. This is an opportunity for Sussex County residents to voice their transportation needs as well as share suggestions for service improvements. Public participation is critical to the ongoing success of our transit system. For additional information, contact Nick Kapitakakis, Transit Director at 973-940-5200, extension 1287, or nkapitakakis@sussex nj.us. Division of Senior Services, 14th Annual Healthy Living Festival. The Division of Senior Services will host the 14th Annual Healthy Living Festival at United Methodist Communities at Bristol Glen, located at 200 Bristol Glen Drive in Newton on Friday, September 22nd, 2023, from 8:30 to 2:00. Seniors are invited to participate in complimentary health screenings and educational presentations sponsored by a variety of healthcare providers. Luncheon will follow the event. For more information about this event, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1277. Sussex County Day, Sussex County Fairgrounds in Augusta. The Division of Community and Youth Services, Health, Senior Services, Social Services, and the Office of Transit will be represented during Sussex County Day on Sunday, September 17th, 2023, at the Sussex County Fairgrounds in Augusta, which is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. The Division will have a wealth of information available to share with visitors about the various programs and services available to Sussex County residents. In addition to giveaways and educational materials, staff will also be available to answer questions. I just want to say that the College Sheriff's Department, Newton Police, and the county put on a very moving 9/11 ceremony that Commissioner Fantasia and Commissioner Carney and I attended on Sunday. And then I also attended a 9/11 ceremony in Vernon, where Vernon Township was one of three towns in the area to receive a seedling from a 9/11 tree. And that was very nice. And we've all attended many community days over the weekend. And the chamber breakfast yesterday was wonderful, too. And that's about all I have today.
Thank you. Commissioner Fantasia?
Thank you. First, before anything, I was not at our last meeting. I know it was a special meeting that was called for a hearing that never happened because those who were going to come didn't. However, I was standing in Trenton testifying in front of the State Board of Education, and I'll get to that in a minute. But I do know that Jill made mention of Dave Kastner's passing. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. You know, for those who knew Dave, besides being a colleague, he was a very good friend. He was only 54. He was a grandfather, husband, father. He was a sheet metal worker for Local 22. He was on our College Board of Trustees. And he was just overall just an amazing human being. And he will be sorely missed. So I would like to mention him in his memory. He was a great person. I'm going to start tonight with the update from the Health Department. COVID-19. Most recent New Jersey Department of Health says Sussex County is in green. That means low level. Same variants as usual. For the month of August, Sussex County is reporting about seven or eight cases a day. And in the month of August, we had nine hospitalizations. In July, we had 11, June 6th. So we're staying close, you know, hovering single-digit kind of numbers for serious illnesses here. And as of mid-September, there was one active COVID-19 outbreak in a group hall and two in long-term care facilities. So as you know, if you're watching the news, reading up on Governor Murphy, the veterans homes in Menlo Park and Paramus, et cetera, infection control is hideous for state-operated or state-controlled facilities, even done by private operators. That's something, again, that we just need to keep an eye on if anything like that would start to flare as we go into the fall months. By way of flu and respiratory illness, that report is only published October to May. So that report is not continued any longer in the state unless there are any large RSV or influenza A outbreaks, which there are none. As far as communicable disease investigations, in the entire month of August, there were 17 reportable diseases investigated other than COVID by public health nursing. There were eight foodborne illnesses, one waterborne, and eight vectorborne or tickborne diseases. And there was one active scabies outbreak in a long-term care facility. So again, keeping an eye on that. Long-term care facilities seem to be a hotbed for, you know, for complications. Office of Mosquito Control, mosquito-borne disease surveillance. If you're watching our social media at all or any of the publications on the police departments have posted some things about it. We have had a serious spike in West Nile virus being located in some of the pools of water that they're testing, and it's pretty widespread. 554 pools of adult mosquitoes have been submitted for mosquito-borne disease testing. 11 pools tested positive for West Nile virus, one pool for Jamestown Canyon virus.[1549.31] 11 pools tested positive for West Nile virus, one pool for Jamestown Canyon virus. You recall a few years back, we were the single fatality in the state for Jamestown Canyon, which was up in Vernon in the Walk Hill Refuge. According to the most recent New Jersey Department of Health vectorborne surveillance report, the entire state is having above-average West Nile virus activity. If you notice around your home that you see an increase in mosquitoes or pools of water that your neighbors aren't tipping over to get rid of, please contact the Office, (940) 5225, and you can alert the mosquito staff to let them know what's happening. Now, our response to mosquito-borne disease detection in Sussex County, we continue to trap, we continue to test in the areas, and we're going to do that through the month of October this year. And we're going to continue to conduct treatment in areas of concern. We do post our spraying schedule on the website. We've completed 40 ULV truck and all-terrain applications for adult mosquitoes in 20 of our municipalities in Sussex County. Applications for controlling these adults will continue. One aerial application for the control of immature larval mosquitoes was conducted on August 17th, and we treated about 1,500 acres in that situation. If you go to Hopatcong Day on Saturday, September 16th, the Office of Mosquito Control will be there. They were actually at Hardeston Day the other day. While we were there, I saw them, they were right across from us. And they'll also be at Sussex County Day on Sunday, the 17th. Now, something else coming out, the Spotted Lantern Fly Grant that I am going to share. All right, now Commissioner Carney's been on the edge of his seat. The Office of Mosquito Control is happy to announce that we participated in the 2023 Department of Agriculture Spotted Lantern Fly Grant Program, and we were actually awarded $25,000 to actually move forward with this. It's in the resolutions for this evening. So just so we understand what this is about, the pest poses a threat to economic crop damage. So the first phase of the grant is trap distribution to local commercial farms. So that's the first place where the traps are going to go, such as fruit tree, grape producers. If traps are available after the first phase, the second phase is trap distribution to actual towns and residents and homeowners. So if you happen to have a hotbed of lantern flies on your property, you can contact the county at that time and have those traps brought to you. So the county's going to make a formal announcement with details on how you can, you know, take advantage of that if you are being invaded by these little pests. Next, Arts and Heritage Council. I do have a recent update from them. They have their Joyful Color Members Fall Exhibition. It's going to run from October 26th through November 16th. So it's age open for everybody, and they're looking for art pieces that draw inspiration from colors that promote joy, optimism, positive thinking, happiness, and strength. So you can go to the Arts and Heritage Council website, and they have the application form that you can click. They have a pretty active website and social media profile. So if you're an artist and you are interested in submitting work, please do so. I also wanted to just share with you, these upcoming weekends are kind of super busy with a lot of the towns celebrating their, you know, their festivals and whatnot. It's a really good, good time to go out and meet everybody. I got to see a lot of things, specifically Hardeston Day was hopping with county services and just different vendors and things. That was a very, very big event. But it's nice to see the county represented there. We had youth and family services there. It was nice to see. Also at the Vernon Street Fair, you know, there's a lot of activity there, and the 9/11 ceremony at the college was actually really beautiful. What a heartb- what was that gentleman's name, the police officer that spoke?
Michelle Cox.
Wow. What a story that he told about his brother-in-law, and it was just absolutely heartbreaking.
He burns a Vernon resident.
Unbelievable. And, you know, we forget about that time, how it brought out like the best and the worst in everybody. And, you know, he fled to the city to, you know, to check on his brother-in-law because on a website, think about what the internet was in 2001, it wasn't exactly like it was now, but fled to go see his brother-in-law where he saw on a website that his brother-in-law was brought to a hospital. They searched every single hospital, and it turns out it was a hoax website that someone put up with names of the missing. And that was so heartbreaking, but it brought him there, and he ended up staying there and helping with the effort. And he said, you know, he didn't have his clothes, and they gave him an honorary, you know, NYPD uniform because of his expertise, and it was just an unbelievable story. And 22 years later, we keep hearing these stories come out, you know, and it was amazing. Okay, bear hunt. They had that meeting. The Fish and Game Council did vote yes to extend the bear hunt for an additional five years. And it looks a little different, I mean, very similar to the emergency order last time with the restrictions. So no bear baiting, no shooting any, you know, immature cubs or mothers that have cubs with them. However, they've reduced it now to seven counties that you can hunt in. Sussex County is one of them. Warren County is no longer a county that you can hunt bear in, but Sussex County is one of them. It's going to be a total of a planned 10-day hunt, one five-day period in October, one five-day period in December, and if they don't reach the bag limit, it will be extended five more days in December to 15 days. So it's ready to go. Lots of protesters, obviously, we have this on both sides, but it's sent to DEP Commissioner Sean Luttrell's desk, waiting for his John Hancock. So hopefully, you know, the state actually stays aligned. We did notice, following that brief hunt, that, you know, some of the complaints were down this year, and I think it's, again, part of a comprehensive black bear management strategy. Also, last Wednesday, I went to the New Jersey State Board of Education to provide testimony on the ridiculous updates to Chapter 7. If you haven't noticed, parents are up in arms specifically about removing gendered language from the code, no boy, no girl, that's removed. Also, they codified the NJSIAA policy that allowed biological males to play in female sports. Before, it was just a guideline from NJSIAA in 2009 and 2017. Now it has become codified by the Department of Ed. Also, mixing genders in classes with sexual health and reproduction lessons on gender identity not based upon physiology. The board said that this was the largest crowd they've ever had. They had 846 comments and over 250 people down at the State Department of Ed building testifying. The room that I was in, I spent maybe two hours into it, and it was only supposed to be two hours long, and it went, I heard, through three and a half hours in four separate rooms with all the board members out. The board had passed it originally narrowly, six to five. Hopefully, they do revisit that. Also, the hot topic was notification to parents if their child's having any mental health issues or any gender identity, gender dysphoria-based issues. And a recent poll that came out from Monmouth University challenged that, where it turns out that over 90% of, I'm sorry, over 80% of New Jerseyans, at least 81%, agree that parents should be notified, and that actually kind of is a bipartisan thing. Over 90% of Republicans and over 60% of Democrats agree that parents should be notified. So it's not going to go away. It's not a problem that's going to go away, but, you know, we'll keep posted on everything that comes out of Trenton. And last but not least, and I know Chris loves, and it goes on, but I did listen to the minutes from last time, and I know there was a concern that was brought here regarding the Black Box Resolution, I believe, came about where was that resolution, what happened to it? And we tabled that resolution, waiting for Assemblyman Space to propose his own legislation that he sponsored, which actually he introduced on June 5th. So what that was, is that was Assembly Bill Number 5548. Now, if you recall, our, my proposed resolution also addressed some of the issues that happened with the gas tax. The board was not in unison. They did not want to give the impression at all, although it was not the intention, that the board supported any type of hike in a gas tax, and it was used somewhat as a political football from my opponents. So the board chose to table it, and instead wait for Assemblyman Space to do his legislation, which strictly sticks to black boxes and mileage-based user fees only. It's incredibly short. The synopsis is prohibits the state from imposing mileage-based user fee, prohibits use of state funding for any program, study, or pilot program related to an imposition of a mileage-based user fee. So the statement that comes out from this bill is this bill prohibits the state from imposing a mileage-based user fee within the state. The bill defines mileage-based user fee as any fee imposed on the owner or operator of a motor vehicle, which fee is calculated based on the number of miles traveled by the motor vehicle during a designated period of time. In addition, the bill prohibits the use of state funding to implement any programs or pilot programs or conduct any studies related to the imposition of a mileage-based user fee within the state. So you remember, we did that, I can't say we, Governor Murphy and company did that randomized, you know, volunteer pilot, do you want to sign up and do this? And he had, you know, a handful of people come in and do that. This actually prohibits that. So my suggestion to the board now that, you know, and our summer sessions are over, we're back in September, if we are agreeable to put that exact style of resolution up in support of that, I would be, you know, open to doing that and not revisiting the entirety of the text of the first resolution that the board was kind of wrestling or grappling with. So just here's to know your thoughts.
If you put it out to Christina, let all the commissioners take a look at it, and then we could go from there.
And also, I don't know if you could clarify, I went online as well to find whether it was removed or not, and it was right there. So what am I, what was the confusion? What do you?
Um, maybe because of the title, it said mileage tax. That might have been the.
So it didn't say the word "black box," per se?
No, not in the title.
Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to provide that clarity, and that's where that resolution is. And if you were, you know, agreeable to it, I'll send you that text from the state legislature, and then we can parlay it.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? That's it? You sure?
I'm sure. That was a lot. Well, that's what happens when I miss last.
Deputy Director Yarvin.
I just want to make a comment. Dawn talked about Dave Kastner, who passed away. Dave was the first person from the trades appointed to the county college, to the county board, and board went, we went to a different direction where we had some trades people rather than the typical, typical people that we would put on there that way. And I think it was for a benefit. He was very helpful, had a good handle on what was being done. So he was a very good guy. And I used to meet with him, and I will miss him. And I will say that we used to meet and have a cigar, and he was just a great guy, and he will be sorely missed. Also, let me just move into this. Couple things. There's a women's health clinic, child health clinic, health check clinic in September, and call Public Health Nursing, or go to our website for additional information. The Division of Senior Services collaborating with Sussex County Community College, they're offering classes to seniors through the center for long, lifelong learning, and they're going to have pre-presentation of art, inside-out art, Friday, September 22nd, from 2:00 to 3:30 in the Performing Arts Center, Fine Arts, and it will be celebrating or showing folk art and talking about the folk art movement. Also, there's a class being introduction to drawing, if ever wanted to learn how to draw. So it's going to be five basic parts introduction. Classes meet five Saturday, September 23rd to October 21st, from 10:00 to 12:00, and there's a $30 fee for that. Also, Sussex County Community College opened its computer lab. It's now available free to Sussex County seniors to enhance your computer liter- uh, literature, literacy skills. And I tell you, the more you work on the computer, the more stuff that comes across, the more I think you need a PhD. Of course, if I ask my nine-year-old nephew to do something, it's like, what do you want to have? All those things. So we're pretty good. The Arts and Heritage Group, county group, had a art show in Newton. They've been doing that, and I went to it, and it was very nice. Again, they have a lot of those things, and Dawn is the liaison to that, but it was interesting to go to a regular art show, and a very nice amount of talent of people we have in the county. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have lots, lots of stuff to go over. Give you a report, the Office of Bridge and Traffic Safety will completing, will be completing limited repairs to sidewalk carried by Sussex County Bridge, K-03 River Sticks Bridge, and will back up. The work is expected to begin on about Tuesday, September 19th, and require about two weeks to complete. The scope of work is limited to select areas of sidewalk repairs on and immediately adjacent to the bridge during work hours of approximately 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The bridge will be subject to daily lane closures with traffic flow maintained using alternate, alternative ways, single lane flagger, and controlled work zone. The department will be issuing a public notice no later than Friday, the 15th. OBTS will be deploying variable message boards prior to start of the work, alerting roadway users to the traffic impacts. Dishing circulation along the sidewalk will be maintained during the work. So if you're from Hopatcong, be prepared. Milling, paving, striping update as of July 11th to 13th, County Route Lewis, County Route 565, Lewis Brook Road was completed. July 14th through 26th, Glenwood Mountain, I'm sorry, Glenwood Martin Station Road, it should be Mountain, no? 565, that was complete July 27th through August 8th. 651, Globe Creamery, Unionville Road was complete. County Route 644, Vernon Crossing Road was also complete, and on August 9th through the 21st, County Route 517, Vernon Glenwood Road was also complete. So we have another eight roads to finish with our resurfacing program. DPW crews worked to complete the in-house paving operation of Vernon DPW Garage Parking Lot. Parking lot has not been paved since 1978, when the Vernon Garage was built. So that was a good feat for them. I also want to say why we have the DPW in hand. Kudos to them. We had a storm last week, as most people know, lots of heavy winds, and they were out there, and they're still cleaning up. So as always, middle of the night, whenever they're called, they get out there and do their job, and we really appreciate the work that they do. We have a letter from the director, Laura Chesla, is that right? Is it Chesla?
I said Chesla.
Chesla, I don't know. Only up there every day. Well, the director from Warren County, and I want to just read this. The Warren County Board of County Commissioners wishes to express our heartfelt appreciation for the gracious support provided by Sussex County during our ongoing restoration efforts following the recent storms. This is going back, I guess, about six weeks ago. The training provided by Sussex County's Department of Public Works to instruct our roads and bridge divisions, crew, and guide rail installation is much appreciated. DPW Scott House and his staff, Bill Huff and Brian Payton, are deserving of special recognition in this effort. They visited our main roads, garage, and velveteer to conduct best practices, seminar with our crews in efficient and safe operation of new guide rail systems along many of our roads. Scott and his crew provided hands-on instruction, demonstrating the use of equipment, and taught several of our DPW staff how to operate it. A future field visit is planned during which our two DPW will collaborate on one of the over 20 locations within the county that suffered significant, significant guide rail damages. The opportunity learned from your DPW, the most efficient operation of not only the equipment, but the training, staffing, and administration of a specialized crew and process was invaluable. Once again, thank you for your generous assistance, and we look forward to reciprocating same support whenever you may require. Our county's collaboration stands as a beacon of hope and resilience in the face of the person. So that was very nice from Lori. That's something Ron kind of spearheaded himself. We went over it together. It's something that we could work hand-in-hand with our adjacent counties, work with each other as almost a shared service. I have some reports from our county clerk, property alert activations. They have gone up. People have been signing up over the last, I guess, six months now, and this is to protect them from basically fraud, from people stealing their, or more so mortgaging their houses and whatnot. They'll be alerted. As of March 20, this year, they started out with 42. That month, in August, it went up to 199. So we're at a total of 529. So this process that the clerk has put in effect has really helped people, and it's becoming more and more used to help promote no fraud in our county. Daniel's Law registrations has been going up month by month. It changes very, varying. We're up to 470. Obviously, you know, Daniel's Law is a big process. The municipalities and counties all over the state have been going through it, which is a hard process to do.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So you're not going to list the elected officials addressed, correct?
If you choose that way, yes. You have to, you have to ask.
So you can still go on the internet and get it?
Yes, only for government-issued, not for private websites. It's only the websites that are government-issued or encompassed under Daniel's Law.
They're still going to fine you, Herb, if that's what you're asking.
It's useless.
It is.
You're going to find you no matter what.
It is, it is.
And we're spending, how much money, 2 million to download?
Yes. Just a note from the clerk, the county is always working to help and work a concert with the commissioners and also with the surrogate in the sheriff's office. Always dealing with them, and they do a very good job. Mr. Henderson, you came up last meeting about some of the, or you had an email, I apologize, you had an email that some of us got, some of us didn't.
Had Sussex spelled wrong.
I can tell you, it bounced back to me immediately.
Did it? Okay, good.
It sent right back to you, again, the same way it was to you.
Okay.
So you should have definitely received it.
I did eventually get it from Christina, but never.
You actually got it from me, I believe.
Yeah, I did.
So I was going to read this. It's kind of long. I know, I talked to Mr. Parrott about it. He's going to send you this information as well, but we have answers to what you are looking for. I believe we have the answers. It seems like we have the answers here. So I'm not going to waste anybody else's time reading this, but you will get this this week. If you do not, you could email me, and I will make sure you get it. Fair enough. I told you I'd get you an answer, and I will have an answer for you. That's all I have for my, oh, I'm sorry, no, I do not. I have a little more. Apologize. Ryan from the county, she's the union president, she's put together a picnic, I think I've all told you guys about that, which I believe is still maybe October, Christina, right?
October 15th.
That was the date set so far. So we solidified $2,000 from some of our commissioners to help provide food for the county. I think that'll offset the majority of the food to start that out as a good day. So I'm looking forward to that. That's going to be the first time ever, as far as I know.
Correct?
Good. Little update on the jail. The survey should be going out on the 15th. It's about a three-day process. So basically, we're going to do, they'll survey the jail, field survey the jail, self-divide that jail, then the next step will be appraisal, and right after that, as long as I have it my way, we'll have that RFP out to go out to get rid of the jail. I will say we have some prospective buyers. We, Ron and I have walked through with some individuals. We'll name anonymous at this point.
Yeah, with court interest.
Some interested people, yes. I think, thank you. So, long story short, the time has come to get rid of the jail and save the taxpayers' money. I worked with, I have been working with Mike Richards, and I talked to Tammy Horstfield today. I came up with an idea about the food pantry. Always looking for more food with the food, throughout the food pantry. Mike Richards is the manager of the fair, and it would be a good idea, and he agreed, and he was going to go over with the board to have a food drive during the fair. He thought it was a good idea. I think it's a good idea. The other idea was to bring it up with Tammy Horstfield at Sussex County Day. So that would be two initiatives to bring some food to the food pantry with ease, I would think. The memorial service, like Dawn said, Commissioner Fantasia said, was very, very nice. The only thing that it lacked was people. And I think, Herb, I think you're, are you liaison to SCCC?
Yeah.
I would just maybe, if you could, maybe just talk to John Connolly and see if we can get that out more, because, I mean, there was a lot of participants, but there was just lack, there was lacking of people. I mean, I would say 15 to 20 people.
Were many, many regular civilians.
Yeah, it's such, it's such a nice memorial. They did a great job, as Dawn previously said. It would just be nice to have it out there.
I would just like to, to state for the record, we, as a governing body, were not even notified. We found out because I believe Commissioner Space's son is a fireman who received it, who shared it with us.
Yeah, we never received a notification.
This is not the first year that that has happened, that we're not notified. So they are not advertising it on a broad scale. So there were dozens and dozens and dozens of actual participants in the ceremony, but fifteen's been.
Right. So if we can just reach out to, to John, uh, Herb, just to get it out more. And then we can get it out as a whole. I mean, there's a lot of things that are always going on and there's a lot of things that we miss and it's not because it's our doing.
I think what I'll do is instead of meeting with, um, uh, what's your name?
Ron.
Ron. With Ron and him, this has been a chronic problem and we seem to fix it. And then I don't know how it just stops. It doesn't, it, and then we fix it again. So maybe Christine will come along and just find a way. Cause there's, they have a lot of events. They had a veterans event a year ago or whatever and, and I was there and there was enough food for thirty, forty people and there were maybe six, seven people there. Where they, and we, they didn't advertise it. So I think that's part of the problem is that they need to, maybe we need to bring Lorraine in. And I've had this conversation in the past, so we'll have to have it again.
Please do. Yeah, it's, it's a shame that they, everybody comes out and participates and then they look around and, you know, there's no one, no one there. That's all I have. Number ten's approval of the consent agenda.
There is none.
There is none. Number eleven, approval minutes. Minutes are from the regular meeting, August ninth, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting? Commissioner Yardley, second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Close. Stand carries. Number twelve, we have an appointment and a reappointment. No resignations. Appointment A, is appointment of Anthony Lantini as a farm represent, representative of the county, Sussex County Ag Development Board effective immediately and expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And appointment B is a re, or, I'm sorry. Appointment B resolution is a reappointment of Mary Jean Ellis, the Sussex County Mental Health Board for a term of three years. Said term to begin immediately and expire September twelfth of twenty twenty-six. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A and B? Commissioner Space, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
All right. We had lots of resolutions because we only had one meeting in August. So there was lots to go over. Let's go get a motion to adopt resolutions A through RR.
Make that motion.
Commissioner Yardley, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion?
Quick question.
Sure.
Why, uh, there's no dollar amount on that?
Why?
Yeah. We're making an appointment of risk manager. There's no dollar amount assigned to that?
They, they don't collect the salary. It's commissioned, driven, it's based on the commissions that they deliver to.
Okay.
Right.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Number fourteen's awards of contract change orders in bid. Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that the adoption of the said resolutions is and will further the public interest. Motion to adopt resolutions A through C. Commissioner Fantasia, Commissioner Yardley, seconds. Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Fifteen's financial. We have a bills list, bills list A. This is the payment of bills list A, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Make a motion to pay the bills list A.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Resolution B is the payment of bills list B from September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to pay the bills list B.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
And resolution C is payment of bills list C from September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to pay the bills list C.
So moved the motion.
Commissioner Hayden, second. Commissioner Yardley?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Stayed.
Sixteen's personnel. Resolution A is personnel agenda from September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to adopt the personnel agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion?
Yes. In reading the personnel agenda, I did notice the two vacancies that were at, um, Board of Elections and the second was at the clerk's office. Is there someone replacing those individuals as of now? Because on that report were two, um, two reservations, one personnel.
Yeah, there has been over the past several weeks, actually three people that have left the Board of Elections.
Board of Elections. So with the, um, with the election coming up? Where are we at or where are they at to fill those seats? Because honestly, it's them that drive that, am I correct? That from a bipartisan fashion.
There's a couple of things going on. We have several employees in the clerk's office that will be pitch hitting if they can't fill those vacancies in the meantime. Cause some people, one of the persons that left the Board of Elections went to the clerk's office.
Okay.
So.
Is it inter?
So it's, it's, yeah, it's been, uh, it's been quite the shell game over there. She's, she's consistently interviewing now to fill those vacancies. So the entry question, we'll, we'll be covered. We want to get those seats filled as soon as we can and get them trained.
And she did a good job, I will say too. Ellen Griffiths did a good job, uh, putting that there at NSAP and recruiting some people. I know she had, last time I spoke to her, I think Christina was with me, she had some, some good people ready to go, had some experience.
She expects us all to be tied up with a bow by the end of the month?
Yep.
Yes. So we were, we were on it. We didn't, we don't need another debacle here in the county.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Administrative report.
Okay, thank you, Director. I got just a few things. The Lantern Fly Grant that we just got, I want to let the board know that was the first grant that we received. It was issued to us and received and written and got to us by Millennium, our grant writer. So it was the first one that we've been able to get from them for twenty-five grants. So they're working hard for us and they met with OEM last week to talk about even more grants that they're going to go after. So there was good news with that. Last week, we met Tuesday. We started the, the initial meeting with the PBA Corrections Unit. Their contract sunsets this year. They, they terminates December thirty-first. So we had our first, uh, negotiating meeting on that, just to set the stage. And I'm, I'm waiting the sheriff and the undersheriff to give me all their details of what they're looking for in the next year's budget. I mean, next year's contract for, for the, for that particular group. And let's see, but the bridge in Hopakon, there was a request that came to us. They have a very big event, uh, coming up in November, as a lot of people do. But they put on a phenomenal parade there where the fire trucks go up. They close one lane of the bridge and they put an arc of, of water over the bridge. And there's a lot of pedestrians that got bridges filled with people. The Misslotta will bring, will do a tour that day all the way around the lake, displaying, you know, the flags and the veterans and all that. And their last stop is at that bridge. And it's quite a ceremony. So that bridge is in bad shape, but even more so the, the walkways that are there are really deteriorated. So they had a request that we could do some temporary work there in support of that, in front of that, that, that event. So that's, that's the reason that was, that was put out there. Lastly, um, next, tomorrow, the Sussex County Board of Trustees Selection Committee will start their interviews for the replacements on the board that are coming off this year and the tragic death of Mr. Castner as well. Next week, they have, we have three interviews tomorrow and we'll have two interviews next week. And that's the five applications that we currently have from our, our postings and gathering of applications. So more to come on that from them after they do their interviews and their, and their, and their communications to us. That's all I got, Commissioner.
All right, good, thank you. Number eighteen's county council.
Yeah, the only thing I have is I would ask for the commissioner's consent to have the administrator execute an MOU, memorandum of understand, like a memorandum of understanding, uh, for a shared service agreement between the judiciary. So Sussex County is part of a business with Morris County. This would, this is a memorandum of understanding that would allow social services to share certain mental health data with the judiciary, with the prosecutor's office, um, and with probation as relates to the mental health diversionary program that's been ongoing in the county for a period of time. But, um, in order for it to work a bit more effectively and efficiently, um, the judiciary has asked for, um, an MOU amongst all the entities that handle that personal data as between people that may go into a diversionary program, to make sure that they indemnify each other and hold each other harmless as in data is being transferred back and forth. This is, this mental health diversionary program, uh, is something that I had in my other life, sort of railed against in the Senate as related to, um, this is the same program, that would potentially allow violent offenders, uh, into, um, this mental health diversionary program as opposed to nonviolent offenders, um, from a Senate bill. However, uh, and that, that bill got passed by the Senate back on June thirtieth by a vote sitting on Governor Murphy's desk. Assuming he doesn't sign it, it'll become law the next time the Senate meets. But the prosecutor did indicate that she will not, she put it in writing, uh, admit violent offenders into the program. From her perspective, it's for nonviolent offenders only and it's really purely discretionary. It's up to the, to the prosecutor how she handles it. But, um, she was pretty forthcoming in that respect. So I didn't see any issues with it. If you guys are all okay with it, Mr. Davic can sign it and send it back.
Got it. All good? Everybody good? Good? Okay. That's all I have?
That's it. Yes, sir.
Nineteen is unfinished business. Anyone have any unfinished business? All right. Twenty is new business. New business. All right. Twenty-one, the public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topic, topics. Please line up at the microphone, state your name and the municipality for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia. Commissioner Space, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stand carries.
Hi, that's Sandy Hall, Lakeview, Jersey. I had talked to you guys previously about the New Jersey Sierra Club Forum and Committee to look at just the potential protections for the Delaware Water Gap, National Recreation Area, as well as the surrounding communities. And we were certainly wanting to surround the community. And the last time I pressed you, I asked if you would write a letter to the New Jersey Sierra Club requesting that you'd be able to participate in any and all discussions of what they consider to be protections for our community. I was wondering if you had written that letter and if you did, did you get a response from them?
There wasn't a letter that went out, but, um, I'd have to double check, but it was my understanding that they had reversed course on, on that.
They rescinded their support of the, of the proposal to change the designation of the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation to a, to a natural park. So they're no longer supporting that proposal. But in their statement rescinding their support, they did say they want to form a special committee to look at, quote unquote, protections for different, um, communities. So I just have a minute left left. As you may know, the New Jersey Sierra Club has withdrawn support of the proposal to change the designation of the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area to a natural park. In a statement withdrawing support of the proposal, the Sierra Club stated would form a committee to look into protections for DIWAT and surrounding communities. We live in a surrounding community and we should know what protections the Sierra Club determines we need and we should be a part of the discussion on those protections. And I put the word protections in quotes because I think we're all doing okay. We don't need the Sierra Club. So to be considered, what protections protected from what? From where will those suggested protections be administered? How will suggested protections be implemented? On what information and or data will these protections be based? If there are costs involved, who will pay? Overall, who will benefit? Will eminent domain be enforced? Two gave the Sierra Club authority, two, for lack of a better term, metal in our community. I respectfully request the commissioners, consider requests to the Sierra Club for meeting requiring these protections. I respectfully request the commissioners, consider appointing a member of the community to participate in any meetings with the Sierra Club to ensure proper representation to our community. If the Sierra Club is not willing to include a representative from our community or any surrounding community to participate in the planning discussions of suggested protections, I respectfully request the commissioners publicly condemn the Sierra Club's actions and determinations and disregard any protections that may come from them. I also request the commissioners, consider sending a statement protest of the Sierra Club's intentions to our state and congressional representatives, urging them to support efforts for our inclusion in any and all discussions pertaining to Sussex County and other affected surrounding communities. Sandyston Township, Hampton Township, Montague Township have already sent letters requesting. I have a copy of Sandyston's, uh, letter, which serves as a template. No one to date has received a response to the Sierra Club. I've been asking for a meeting for about a year and a half for PA and New Jersey and I've been stonewalled. And my hope is that our elected and appointed officials will get better results than I did. So thank you very much.
Sandy, Sandy, just one, one second. One second. You do such a great job, by all means, and I'm just talking to council here. Number one, he, he recommended, which I, I like, as long as the board is on board with it, we could request the Sierra Club to come here.
Wonderful. That would be phenomenal. I attended Sandyston Township's meeting this morning and Sandyston Township is also going to send a letter. No, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. They're going to request the Sierra Club in a second, a letter to come forth with information. Sandyston Township is also going to request that John Don, you authored the proposal that's issued here to Sandyston Township to elaborate on the proposal. Although the Sierra Club has withdrawn its support. Personally, I see their commitment for our protection to be a back door, to get that proposal passed, to designate the recreational to national park. So, yeah.
I have one more. So as long as the board is good with that, also we could send a letter, have them come here and we could find out what they're up to in front of everybody. But I have one more for you as well. What if you were our rep from the county?
I would respectfully decline. Because, um, as I said, I have emailed the Sierra Club in New Jersey. I have emailed them, called them, sent letters. And I will say this, it's sort of like knocking on the governor's door.
We know all about that.
Nobody answers.
Yeah. But if, if, let me, let me just ask council, if, if she, if Sandy was our rep for their county, would we be able to put her name on county letterhead as a rep for us? If she worked on their, like, planning or, or, or something like that?
You have the ability to designate a representative, by all means.
The reason why I say that, because maybe it'd be a little bit more official, Sandy, instead of them shutting the door. You don't want anything to do with it.
No, I don't, because I do represent the Delaware Water Gap Defense Fund, which has been actively opposing this for a year and a half. So they know who I am, and they really seriously do not want to talk to me. So anyone at large who is familiar with this proposal, I think would be.
I think your first suggestion is a good one, you know. We're curious, we'd like to know what you mean. We're inviting you to a public meeting. Feel free to come tell us what you have in mind.
Well, let's, yeah, let's start with that, and then you come back or whatever, we'll have your email. Can we have a copy of what?
I have a copy for everyone.
Yeah, if you can give it to Christina, and then we can get in touch with you and kind of give you an idea of where we're at. But we'll have them come in, like, you know, when people get under our skin a little bit, we'll invite you in. And all I could say is, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for your consideration, I truly, truly appreciate it.
If I could just say, the watershed meeting in Hackensett, which I went to this year or last year, but trying to remember which year it was. But they have it every year, and the Sierra Club, Sierra, Sierra Club was there, along with a whole bunch of groups about this property. And the good thing was, it turned out to be a big argument. But some of the things they're saying, the property needs to be protected from development, development around. I mean, some of the things they were using to get their hands on the property, and I agree with you one hundred, as I'm sure the board members, that this is a backdoor way to get the property because it was not well received. And there are several Indian tribes also that claim jurisdiction to that property.
Yes, sir, I'm working shoulder to shoulder with the local Remaco here in Andover Township to defeat this proposal. The Sierra Club and the Nature Conservancy, as well as other environmental slash preservation slash conservation organizations are on a massive move to secure private properties and easements for what I consider somewhat bogus operations like Bobcat Alley, which is coming over in the heart of Andover Township. I believe that every person has the right to own their property and to manage their property as well as their county the way they believe. This proposal, if it does go through, the Sierra Club certainly behind it, I think is going to bring forward at some point eminent domain as part of a larger project in that Stokes High Point, Orbiton State Park, twenty thousand acres of the Delaware State Gamelets of Pennsylvania. The link will add together, we're going to take private property. As a resident of Laton, which is already seventy percent state and federally owned because of Cox Island, High Point and Stokes State Forest, and we take nothing for them to come in and take over the other thirty percent of my township. That's the larger picture, further down the road. But right now, I think we are taking baby steps to take our, I try and my way to get this proposal defeated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy. Always a good, good job.
Thank you.
I see that look like dirt comes again. Alan Henderson, Lafayette Township. I've got a couple of questions, so I'm going to fire them out really quick. I know I'm on this three-minute gun. First of all, I'm going to ask again regarding your minutes. I brought it to your attention, the minutes are not on your website since February, nor is your bills list. I've heard you sit here and all approve the bills list was coming out, and it was going to be made public. I don't know what it takes to do that, but it still has not been done. I'm going to thank you for reaching out, but I would like an answer. Is it something the county is prepared to do and able to do, provide the reports regarding the elections?
Yes, and you'll see that.
So we're going to be able to access that information?
You'll see exactly what Mr. Parrott has. He's going to email that to you. Again, if you do not receive that, then you can call me.
And that should be this week, or next week?
I think he said September fourteenth. Yes, September fourteenth.
Okay, appreciate that. My next question, I'm going to direct directly to you, Commissioner Fantasia. You put a post out on your Facebook page on supporting the fact that you were doing the black box and supporting assembly in space. The resolution you pulled that night, at the last meeting, I asked about that resolution. Everybody sat here and could not give me an answer until you were attending a meeting. So to say we all agreed on pulling that resolution, I can't say I'm in agreement with that because nobody could give me an answer here last week. I'm going to ask you point blank, do you support the gas tax? Because your new resolution, you did.
Time out, Mr. Fantasia. This isn't, this is not, not the forum, not the place. This isn't a Q and A. You know, Commissioner Fantasia is not on trial. We're not going to sit here and have a little political campaign. Make your speech, you've got three minutes. Yeah, you are.
No, I'm not.
Make your, have your speech.
No, I'm saying in the.
You're burning your time debating with me, so why don't you just finish with your three minutes?
I'm trying to. If you look at your resolution, you, in the resolution, it says in the resolution, the one you prepared previously, that you were against the gas tax and raising. And that would have been you guys as a group. I'm just asking, is that gas tax coming up in your new resolution, or is that gone?
I think you heard from everybody that there's a revised draft of the resolution that will be circulated. You find your way to this meeting every two weeks when we have them. By the next time you get here, I'm sure it'll be back on the agenda. You have plenty of opportunity to read it.
Will we see this before the meeting?
Sure, you'll, you get this, we see everything, most everything that's up on the agenda is up well in advance, unless something comes up short notice. But I think, as Commissioner Fantasia said, just requires some tweaks. So the extent it's done in time, it'll be published, like everything else. And if I'm not mistaken, the bills are published with the agenda when the agenda's up there. There might not be a separate tab, but it's not hard to find. It's up there with the agenda.
The bills list?
Yes, the bills are published with every agenda. All fourteen hundred pages.
It is on the Word document, all the way at the end, the bills list. It is, it is, what we're trying to do is move it to, it's easier to access on the web. And I've been told and guaranteed, we did create the tab, it will be up there. And then the next meeting, you'll be able to see the bills list current.
The bills list is on the agenda, just keep going.
What happened with the agenda was just simply an accident, it got downloaded someplace else, and that was it.
Can we answer why the minutes are not posted?
I mean minutes.
It's the minutes. So what happened was, it actually goes back to November of last year. They were misappropriated on the website, and some of them in the wrong fashion. They've all been deleted, they've been working on uploading them all correctly. I'm told it should be done before.
Just had this discussion in the office.
By the end of next week.
Just for clarification, the minutes themselves have not been deleted?
No, they were just, they were uploaded and added to an incorrect document on each. There's other doc tabs, that's where they've been uploaded onto. So they've all been fixed, they will be fixed.
Has the audio?
The audio has been up within twenty-four to forty-eight hours each time.
To be able to listen to the meeting was not affected, it was the PDF?
It's the, only the PDF, yes.
So I guess what you're saying, if you need the minutes, you could listen to it.
Well, no, that's tough, that's time intensive, that's, they weren't timed. But I understand, but us upgrading to the website, to the new.
Right, the upgrading caused a little issue, it had a hiccup.
We're working on it, we're not trying to ignore anybody or hold anything back from you.
Bill said, when we get the agenda, to get to the bills list, we have to go through.
Scroll all the way down to the back.
And candidly, I think they appreciate you bringing stuff like that to their attention because there was an IT issue.
I just want to say something, and I do, and I'm going to tell you this from the bottom of my heart. I'm not standing here campaigning in any shape or form. I'm standing here asking questions that I think the public has the right to know as transparency.
Okay.
I'm not campaigning on anybody's behalf, myself, yours, or anybody.
And, and let's be very clear, that this portion of the agenda, in accordance with the county code, is public comment. It's not a Q and A. You have the ability to make your statement. And every once in a while, we engage in a colloquy like we did with this hall as relates to the Delaware Water Gap, because as Commissioner said, this is going to lead toward inviting them here, which seemed like a logical solution to the problem. But, you know, you tend occasionally to launch these personal attacks, and that's what that was.
It's a question asking whether anybody is in support, or are we going to put that back in the resolution?
I wasn't born yesterday, and neither were you, I know what that was.
Well, that's your opinion, sir, and I'd have to say I disagree with it.
Fair enough, you're allowed to disagree with it. My job is to sit here and make sure that we abide by the terms of the agenda, and it gets done legally, and that's exactly what we're doing.
And to ask if it's going to be on the.
All right, all right, you know what, we're done. You got your three minutes, we're done, we're not going to argue here, that's not what we're going to do. There's not that many people here. There's not, there's not that many people here, so we answered some of your questions. If you have any questions going further, and you want them answered, you can either call me, you could email me, or my clerk, or our council, or administrator, at any time. But we're not going to do this anymore. We're done.
So you're telling me as a resident, I can't come forward and ask you a question?
You could ask whatever you like for three minutes, but don't expect them to be answered.
I've got a very, very time with that.
Okay.
I have a question, I'm sorry, Mr. Henderson, are you on a governing body currently?
I am.
So you already know this, so we're not telling anything you don't already know of what procedures are.
I can tell you around Lafayette Township, and I have never was.
We're done.
I was just curious. I was curious.
Ask anybody to step down or told anybody that they're not allowed to talk at Mike.
Never said that, we never said that.
That's not what he said at all.
It's not what I said.
Absolutely not.
But you can read the minutes when they're up. All right.
Deborah Carr, Carstens.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name?
It's Deborah Carr, C A R D.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering. I have to agree with Alan, I'm not running for anything, so we can take that off today. But I do have a question. Obviously, you said it's the only one to answer, thank you for answering, I appreciate it, that does answer my question. What I would like to know is, the night you pulled it, you never gave an excuse, you just said you were pulling it. Why didn't you give that excuse that we were waiting for Mr. Parker, or for Senator Parker to write his? No excuse was ever given, that was my question.
Well, I think, again, when we pull something, if you say an excuse, you know, per se, if the consensus is, when each board member gets it, and they say, you know, back to Christina, I'm not ready to vote, I'm not ready, I'm not ready, then we just come, we pull it, and it goes back for further consideration. I do know in one of the minutes of the meetings, I did say Parker was doing one, and I know that because I read in where, it was in my comments, in my written comments.
No, that's fine. The answer is, I just, like I said, Commissioner Carney didn't seem to know the answer, and he thought she'd it to you for today, and I appreciate you answering it.
And I didn't want to answer on her behalf. You know, I got to be honest with you, when this, the black box, that wasn't the resolution title, as far as I remember, so that confused me a little bit, I'll be honest with you.
I only know what it was.
As it did some of the other Commissioners, we're like, not sure exactly what's going on. But we'll look into it, I knew Mr. Henderson was going to come back.
It's fine, that's fine.
And Commissioner Fantasia's here.
Thank you for answering it. My second question is, how much did, Commissioner Carney, how much did you say it was going to cost for the prosecutor's office?
Actually, that was Commissioner Hayden, but he is right, around the number of seven or eight million dollars.
Can I ask why the jail can't be reappropriated for even people, ladies, to have the library or the prosecutor's office?
To get that up and running is upwards of fourteen million dollars.
I thought it was higher than that.
But to get back in that building would be fourteen million dollars.
I work in that building, I'm all aware.
There you go, there you go.
And it's, it's handicapped accessible, it's secure, and I don't necessarily know if a reappropriation would be a bad idea, even if we combine the ladies in the jail and the prosecutor's office, but it might be something to look at, it's just a suggestion as a taxpayer.
And, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, we have discussed some of that. It's just, it's, we have, I'll leave it at that.
And my last question, real quick, is, Mr. Parrott, I know Alan was the one that wanted to know, but I would appreciate that answer. That's okay, that's my last question. I would appreciate that answer also as a taxpayer and a voter.
And, and you can.
Are we going to have that uploaded to the website?
On his website, I'm sure he'll have that. If you have a question for Mr. Parrott, I was just, I told.
No, 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 the letter he wrote that you're, that he's sending.
Mr. Henderson will get it, if he wants to forward it to you, he can do that, if he wants.
Well, it was in a public forum, he asked it, is there any way it can be posted? Because I know other people, including the Tea Party, wanted to know that.
Again, I can't speak for, for clerk, but I would imagine when this comes into fruition, it will be on his website, for sure.
On his website?
Yes.
And I do hope you're on that?
Like I said, I can't speak for Mr. Parrott, but I would imagine that's where it would be. He's very good at what he does.
Requesting it, we're all over it.
There you go. Perfect, thank you.
Can I comment? I was at that actual Monmouth County meeting with the, with Christine Hamlin, who was there. And again, some of the counties are doing it, and the information that's being asked is not proprietary. You know, it's, it's not a private situation. Again, I appreciate you not speaking for me the other week, if you thought, last week, if you thought I would have something, you know, some arcane knowledge to add to it. And no, we don't want to speak for Jeff Parrott in this circumstance. But again, it's, it's not beyond the pale, and of course, if there's a procedure that comes out of Jeff Parrott's office that explains how to obtain that information, and those lists each day, that would be published. Because again, if you go on other counties, they currently do that.
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Wendy Whipple, Andover Township, I have a question regarding the sale of the jail. I want to thank you for selling an underutilized building, taking that off the county's list. It turns out that it can't be rehabbed and used efficiently for the prosecutor's office. Will a sale of jail result in additional revenue for the county? And the fact that you will not have to maintain it? Could this be used to maintain other buildings that the county has now? Because I understand that's an issue, of course. And will you be taking the possible revenue into account when you're making your decision regarding Dennis Library? And I ask you to table your decision on Dennis Library until you receive the facts from your engineering report that you asked for back in July, and an alternative plan can be discussed.
And I just want to be clear, sale's not the only potential disposition. When, just Mr. Carney, Director Carney used the word sale, and then I just clarified with him and said interest. He said buyer, I think, and I said interest. I mean, it can also be disposed of via lease, depends on what people's interests are. So it may not be like a cash, like a lump sum windfall, depends on.
But could it result in additional revenue for the county? If you're not maintaining that space, I would think even that would be.
Potentially, yes.
Could hope for that.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, but I want to just be clear, it may not necessarily mean that it results in a sale.
I understand what you're saying, it could result in different disposition of the property, that makes perfect sense. But I'm still asking you, you would look at that in relation to the total picture of county buildings, and not make a decision on Dennis Library until you have all the facts, including possible savings of maintenance of that building, and including possible lease revenue, sale revenue, whatever it might be, until you have the report and you have an alternative possible.
Thank you.
Can you say just something today, or something? I'm sorry.
No, just, we got to stop. This is, this is for comments only, this is getting out of line, and it really is. You know, I don't mind answering questions, and there's not many people here, but it's getting very combative. These meetings are going long now, and, you know, the door is always open, I've always said that. You know, I will always answer your phone calls, whether we like each other or not, I always will get back to you, whether it be email, text. You can always call our office, our clerk, everything. But we can't go back and forth like this. I mean, you're here to make comments, this is not Q and A, as our attorney said. And we're ourselves, myself too, is answering questions, that we should just be here to listen. We're here to help, we're here to be transparent, we're not trying to hide anything, we're not. It's not what we're here for, but we got to stop.
Oh, this wasn't answering a question.
You have a comment for me?
I do have a comment for you.
Okay, yeah.
I think the First Amendment is an absolutely wonderful thing, Commissioner Carney. It allows people to come here and speak their mind. They get their three minutes in the confines of, you know, what the Open Public Meetings Act indicates, whether they come as proxy, whether they come grandstanding. No matter what way they come, we are here to listen. And I want you to know, for my remaining time on the board, whether it's the remainder of this year, whether it's into next year, whether it's a subsequent term, whatever it ends up being, we will always extend that, or I will always extend that because that's the law, and it's the First Amendment. So regardless of how someone comes, we answer them, treat them professionally, and always will.
And my dispute was not directed at you personally, it's you're trying to engage in this like Q and A and yelling out questions and expecting responses, and I did not realize you were a councilman. To the extent you are, you know it's public comment, it's there to deliver your comments, they can deliver it on, I may get a bat to you, but before it devolves into some like cross-examination, that's where I was.
Can I say something regards to that? I mean, you're, you're talking to me, I still have a right to talk to you. I sat on Lafayette Council for nine years, was just elected for another three years.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So it doesn't mean whether I'm a councilman or whether I'm a nobody. I think I have a right to voice my thing, I just wanted to know. We all know the gas tax is going up a penny, it is. We all supported the fact that not, I just wondered.
But we have nothing to do with the county to do that, Alan, you know that, you know that.
Is that a resolution, if your resolution was going to say that? And I'm not sitting here arguing with you, I'm just saying, the initial resolutions that we were against the gas tax.
Which got, which was tabled for whatever reason, it's going to come back in whatever form, and we'll have a chance to discuss it when it's on the agenda, as an agenda comment at the appropriate time. All I was saying to you, and I'll reiterate, it's not a Q and A, it's not intended to, because this devolved into arguments, which is kind of, was, it was only that in there. I was just trying to rein it back in. You're obviously a strong personality, you're a smart guy, it just didn't, and I mean that respectfully, it just didn't need to devolve into something unmanageable. That was all.
This was from outside looking in. You asked the lady.
Okay.
You came and asked a question.
Okay, all right, we are done. Anyone else, please? Anyone? You sure?
Are you going to take any questions?
No, no, we're not going to come back. We're going to be there for quite a long time, I assure you that. I would think upwards of an hour and a half, maybe two hours.
We'll take, I have a question. We will take no action, is that correct?
We should not be taking, there will be no action for tonight. You're more than welcome to stay, and we can tell you, you know, it's not just of what happened, but it's going to be a while, I know that for sure.
I have one question.
You can make a comment.
Excuse me, can we?
If you could just follow procedure.
Yes, just come on, please.
Just state your name and your municipality again.
Helen Hackman, New Jersey. I would volunteer, as a really good researcher, when we became interested in the Dennis Library and doing things for it, we all gathered information. You know, the world-class library in here, I was, I taught high school for many, many years. We have to educate them, we want research, you know, do you need a forum? Do you need to find out what other, what other towns got their library, their grants fulfilled?
other towns got their library grants fulfilled? We have all that information. I have a folder on my kitchen table that's just big, my husband just said, I can't reach the back end of the information, you know, because I gathered information, and if you had a subcommittee or anything, an advisory committee or something of that nature, we would be happy to, not also, you know, and I'm working with Handicap, I have a thing about helping with the handicap, and I get the fencing every time I go in that Dennis Library, so that's my motivation, it's not to argue, it's not to demean anyone, I cannot admit, I was totally all good into the minority, which is very well worth, why, if you needed help or anything like that, if you needed volunteers, you needed somebody to go and dig stuff up and put together stuff, there's so great, because we did it for so many years with students, I have eight million students, different students working on this town, and any of them, so I just, instead of questioning, instead of arguing, we can help if you need to consider this, you know, we have a lot of information that I'm doing, so just follow the comments, so thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else before we close? All right, can I get a motion to close before for public comment, return to regular meetings?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Carries, number 22 is reminders, reminder Sussex County Day is this Sunday from 12 to 4:00. Also, we have the Garlic Festival coming up, that is next month on the 21st, that's our 12th annual. County of Sussex, through the Division of Planning and Economic Development, coordinates and produces the Harvest Honey and Garlic Festival. This annual event provides direct and indirect economic benefits to local economy. Preparations have begun for this event, I'd imagine you would be there, Jack, it starts at 10 o'clock to 4:00 P M., and it is free, it's a very good event, I'll remind you again.
Is it located where?
At the Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds.
And also, this Saturday, I think Saturday's Hardeston and Hapcon Day.
No, I think it's Hamburg.
Hamburg, Hardeston was already on, I apologize, Hamburg and Hapcon Day, September 20th, for the commissioners, anybody else out there, I know Mr. Henderson has shown up before, we have our mayoral dinner on the 20th at the Carriage House, me and Commissioner Hayden will be attending, it'll be a very good one, we're going to go over senior services, the director of the D L G S will be there, along with Christine Quinn going over some, some municipalities stuff, so it should be a good one. As of anything else, please check your county website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Number 23, executive session, Christina.
Number 23, resolution regarding providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of N J S A 10:4-12 exec, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings